Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, July 22 of 2014. The agenda for tonight is a call to order, approval of the minutes dated July 8th and the 18th, questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda. We've got Chief Mark Duff here to give us a historical account and recognition of the Hingham Call Fireman, and this is really good. I got a preview of this. This is pretty cool. We're going to have the Aquarian Quarterly Update. John Walsh and Ronit Goldstein will be here. We will have a sewer commission discussion. We'll do some appointments, do town reports, and then we're going to go into executive session to discuss two pieces of real estate. And that's it for the evening. So with that, have you both read the minutes?
Yep.
Another fine job by Sharon.
Yes.
You too?
Yes.
I'll take a motion then.
Take a motion to approve the minutes of July 18, 2014, and July 18, 2014.
It's written second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Questions from the public? Mr. Hershey, identify yourself and then...
My name is John Hershey. I don't expect any answer on this issue, but I understand the harbor master is going to be renting out kayaks down the harbor. It's a process, I understand. Where is the parking for that? Also, where's the liability? I don't believe the residents should take on that liability because people that are inexperienced are going to rent the kayak. I think there's a problem there. Over this weekend, I came across a very sad incident where a town employee is on workman's comp, and he's been on workman's comp for a while. He's been asked not to do work on the side, and he's kept on doing it. And I found him doing something on recreation, on recreation, you know, like whatever. This weekend, I have pictures to show you, and I expect something to be done on the issue.
Okay. Thank you, John. And as you know, we can't discuss personnel issues, but thank you.
No, I didn't expect anything.
Thank you.
You've got it. So you just do your thing. It's sad this has happened. It's too bad that certain people have to be, go through the meat grinder when they're out on injury, which is legit, and it looks like this here might be a person that's untouchable, need I say? So you do your homework and do what you have to do. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Chief Duff? Let's have the good news story.
Yeah, this is kind of a fun thing. It is a fun thing. Mac Duff, 37 Bradley Park Drive Fire Chief. Much to my surprise, during, I think, the second week of July, we received an envelope in the mail from the city of Salem. And it was accompanied with a letter and a nice certificate of commendation of the Hingham Fire Department for services rendered at a fire in June of 1914. And I'll start with the letter, and then I want to talk just a little bit about the volunteer fire department in the community as it existed then. This is the Chief Mark Duff, Hingham Fire Department, et cetera, et cetera. On June 25th, the city of Salem held a commemoration to mark the centennial of the great Salem Fire of 1914, which destroyed 250 acres and 1,400 buildings in our city and left over one-third of our population homeless. The Hingham Fire Department was one of over 20 departments to answer the mutual aid call and come up to Salem on that tragic day. When word reached them of the fire, Hingham Fire Captain Albert Kimball, now that was Chief Kimball's father, Chief Kimball was chief from 1941 to 197, excuse me, 1942 to 1971. His father was an electrician in him, was a volunteer firefighter. Fire Captain Albert Kimball rounded up his crew, and they drove to Salem that afternoon in two private cars. Arriving in Salem, they situated themselves between the fire raging down Eden Street and the houses on Missouri Street. Having no fire equipment, the men promptly gathered all the blankets, rugs, and clothing they could find from abandoned houses, soaked them in Salem Harbor, and laid them on the roofs and walls of the houses. A continual bucket brigade kept the fabric wet even as they began to smoke from the heat, but structures on Missouri Street were saved in the end. At 11:30 PM, they headed to Union Street where they assisted in manning other department lines until the fire was extinguished. And close here, please find the city seal for the men and women of the Hingham Fire Department to mark the centennial and express the appreciation of our still grateful community. Signed, Kimberly Driscoll, Mayor, City of Salem. And then the certificate reads, "City of Salem proudly honors and recognizes the Hingham Fire Department in gratitude for your bravery and compassion rendered to the people of Salem during and after the great fire of 1914. When our city most required aid, the Hingham Fire Department was there to answer the call with a selfless devotion of both duty and charity. The Hingham Fire Department's actions in Salem on June 25th, 1914, are a lasting tribute to the professionalism and proficiency of the men and women who served."
It's already up, yeah.
Okay, put it on that.
Put it on here?
Yep.
Okay.
No, here, on the stand.
All right, oh, I get it.
So everybody can see.
Now, just to give you a little background, I know you have a busy agenda tonight. In 1914, the department was totally volunteer firefighters. There may have been one firefighter, one permanent man on the job. I meant to look it up today, and I didn't. But it was all volunteer firefighters who were not paid to do, to fight fires. They volunteered. They were turned out to alarms by church bells, and needless to say, they came from their businesses and their homes, et cetera, et cetera, to answer the call. Brush fires, however, if it was a brush fire, they were paid $0.50 an hour to respond to brush fires. And needless to say, there were a lot of brush fires. I don't want to say that anything may have been a little crooked, but building fires, they were not paid for. The engine company itself, that's where the word "company" comes, these were companies of men. The engine company on building fires, blocks alarms, alarms of fire, received $10. So if Engine 2 and Engine 1 and Ladder 1 responded to a call, each one of those companies received $10 from the town that went into their kitty that paid for the clam chowder and some of the coalations that they had afterwards. But this truly was a conflagration, you know, needless to say, 1,400 buildings. I personally have responded to a conflagration in Chelsea in 1973, and to go up there with no equipment and actually literally stop a fire from proceeding down a particular street, which I believe is Missouri Street, is really a tribute to those people. So I thank the mayor. I will write a thank you letter in return. You may want to sign that, Mayor and Chairman, and that's what I have to say about the great Salem Fire of 1914.
That's amazing, and we would all, I think, be very happy to sign the thank you letter. And that goes way beyond mutual aid.
Well, I was just thinking, I was looking around to see if anybody here may have remembered the fire, but I guess not.
Even if they do, they're not going to stick their hand up. Bob does?
Bob does.
Our cameraman.
Well, Tom Studley, even Tom, I don't think would remember that one.
Dave, you remember it? Oh, good. I thought you had your hand up, and I'm going, wow. Thank you. And you're going to stay, right?
Yes.
Excellent. Because I would like you to say a couple at the end.
I'll be here.
Talk a little bit about the meeting.
Okay.
That I was able to attend only a half of. I found it fascinating. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And now, I saw John Walsh, I saw Ronit, and all yours. We've got your presentation, and it's up technically. So what I think we'll do is let you go through the presentation, or do you want questions from us while you're going through, or do you want to go through it?
Why don't I go through it first? Actually, can I get a copy?
And what we'll do, we'll take questions from us, and then after you're done and we're done, we'll open it to the audience for a time for questions.
Okay.
So thank you both for coming. Thank you for bringing a number of people I recognize in the audience. And if you'll...
So this is, advances it? This is forward? Okay.
If you'll tell us, I think most people know, but just in case, introduce yourselves in, Ronit, and then if you'll go ahead and do your presentation. This is the quarterly update, plus they are going to talk about our recent water ban. All yours, John.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for having us here this evening. I'm John Walsh, Vice President of Operations for Aquarian, and with me, Ronit Goldstein, who's our Manager of Community Relations. And sitting here in the front row is Jeff Farrell, who is our Director of Operations now for Massachusetts. Jeff has 36 years of experience with the company down in Connecticut, so we are very happy to have him up here with his experience. So tonight, I'm going to start the discussion about the recent need to implement a ban on the usage of irrigation systems and sprinklers. And first, to give... I'm not sure if I'm not... Do I have to point this at something?
Well...
Not advancing at all?
Plan B.
Even up there?
That's why you always bring paper copies.
Yeah.
Does that wrap it up?
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Aye.
Okay, here is...
I've got it on high screen, but I don't know if, is there another remote for that?
Probably off there on the keyboard. I'll stand over there.
Is the keyboard working at all?
It's working earlier than at all.
Technology is great until it doesn't work.
Did I try, try escape to see if it comes out of slideshow? Works better.
I fixed pipe, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Who ends shows?
Oh, there we go.
Somebody going to have to sit there and...
It's work.
Can you do next?
That's not working even now.
Okay.
So first, to give a little perspective, let's look at rainfall for the month of June. As you can see from the graph here on the left, total rainfall in June was less than previous years. And just as important, I think, is the days of rainfall. And there were about half as many days of rain this June as compared to other years. The Mass DCR actually recently reported that on July 8th, the drought map from the National Drought Mitigation Center showed abnormally dry conditions in this area of Massachusetts. So the result of this dry spell was high demand for water in our system, likely related to irrigation demand. In fact, system delivery, and system delivery is the sum of the water delivered to the system through our water treatment plant plus the water from coacid. And that was 12% higher in this June compared to last June. This graph shows the system delivery trend for June and early July, and there's two sets of data shown here. The blue data is the daily system delivery, and of course, on the bottom there are the dates, and on the vertical, on the Y-axis is million gallons per day. So the blue data is daily system delivery, and the red data is the seven-day rolling average of that daily data. And it shows that demands were increasing in the last two weeks of June. So we called for odd-even watering restrictions on June 20th, and you can see that the following week after that, they can, the demand, and system delivery is a proxy for demand, because the only way to truly measure demand is at customer meters, and we only read them quarterly. So this is a proxy for demand. So demand increased through that following week after the 20th, and then we called for a ban on use of irrigation systems and sprinklers on the 28th. So we had difficulty keeping up with the demand. And one result is that our tank, the water levels in our tanks decreased. And this graph shows the water levels in our tanks during that, during that two-week period. The red line is the water level in the Turkey Hill tank. The blue is the water level in our Accord tank. Turkey Hill serves northern Hingham and Hull, and Accord tank serves from basically where the treatment plant is, south in Hingham.
Can you tell everybody what the normal water level is versus what the lowest level was versus the critical level?
Okay. So the average water level from June 1 to May 30 in the Turkey Hill tank was 57 feet. And I'm not sure that everyone can read that up there. I can't read without my glasses. Let me figure this open. So the Turkey Hill tank, I know the average between, I checked the average between, for the entire period, that we were below 40 feet, which was, I don't have the dates off top of my head, but that was 33 feet. So the average is 57 feet, and the average during that low period was 33 feet. The lowest we got in the tank was 22 feet. To put that in context, system pressures remained within the normal range. Most of the customers in, the vast majority of customers in Hingham and Hull were still in the 50 to 80 PSI range. There was about 50 to 100 customers who were around 35 PSI. 35 PSI is a number that matters because the DEP guidelines recommend a minimum of 35 PSI in a water system. And we don't think there were any customers under 20 PSI. And 20 PSI matters because the state DEP would like utilities to call them and notify them when a population of more than 5,000 people are at 20 PSI or less. So we didn't think we had anyone under 20 PSI. From the time period from June 20 till, I believe it was July 11, we checked our customer information system, and we had two low-pressure calls the entire span of time, which is indicative of, you know, our assessment that there wasn't, there wasn't low pressures in the system. To that?
Yep. And then the low pressure, because later on, I attended a meeting with John, Ronit, Chief Duff, and Deputy Olson that talked about the firefighting issues. So if you want to talk a little bit about that, or we'll wait and have Mark come up too and talk about it. I thought it, I thought it was an excellent meeting.
Sure, yeah. The low, the usable volume in the Turkey Hill tank is from seven-foot depth up. The tank has an overflow at 70 feet, so that's the most depth of water you can put in the tank. So the lowest we got was 22 feet. We weren't there for very long, but we did get there, and the usable volume is all the way down to seven feet in the tank.
Okay.
So you'll see on this, just a little bit of background on this trend line, you see that the tank level fluctuates. And it fluctuates because when you have a treatment plant like ours, the general rule of thumb in the industry is you want to run it at a constant rate, because you don't want to change the rate too much during the day, because it disrupts the treatment process and could lead to water quality problems. So you typically run the treatment plant as a constant rate as you can, and you let tanks fluctuate in water level. You also do it because you want water moving in and out of the tanks, or the water will stagnate. So that's why you see the fluctuations in the tank levels, and the peaks are overnight. What we typically see is, in the morning, we'll see high demand. In the evening, running till about 9 o'clock, we see high demand, and that's all year long. We see those periods of high demand. That's when we see our tanks dip. In the summer, we see significant dips in the tank starting about 2:30, 3:00 AM, when the irrigation systems come on. So during... Sure. How does the tank recharge itself? I mean, does it, at some point, fill up to 70 feet? How does it do that? No, we stop it from going up to 70 feet. So at night, typically what happens is, let's say, after 9 o'clock, when demand starts to come off of the system, we're putting more water into the system than the customers are using. So the, and so the tank fills during that period of time. During those periods of time where the tank is dropping, we're putting less water into the system than the customers are using. So the tank fills, in the summer, fills from like 9 o'clock at night till 2:30, 3:00 in the morning, and then the irrigation systems come on, and we typically see a drop in the level then. Is there some kind of pump or something that you use to pump the water into the tank, or? Yeah, we've got five pumps at the treatment plant, distribution system pumps, three of them pump water to the Turkey Hill tank, two of them pump water to the Accord tank. So basically, you're just saying, because the call for service is so great in these warmer months, that the level's just dropping down, right? Yeah, well, we'll get into, I'll get into why they, why they ended up coming, dropping down to lower levels. But those normal fluctuations happen all year long. The, you know, the diurnal changes in tank level happen all year long. Are they at that level, pretty much? No, the average, just as an example, from January 1 to May 30 was 57 feet. Okay. It's the average in the tanks, in the Turkey Hill tank. So this trend line is, you can see from June 20, we weren't, we weren't regaining in our tanks. So the decrease in demand that we were expecting from calling the odd-even restrictions was not there. And this occurred because we could not keep up with demand, and the problem resides in our raw water infrastructure. So I've got a figure up here of our raw water infrastructure, and I want to describe that. So you can see here, I'll try to orientate you, this is in south Hingham. The filtration plant is the large black box, almost in the middle of the map, and Main Street is just about vertical, vertical in the center of the map. So on the, we have one reservoir and nine wells, and actually, the majority of our water, the vast majority of our water, comes from our wells. The reservoir is located at the far southern extent of our system, and we pump water from the reservoir to the treatment plant. And this drawing also shows the pipelines. You can see them running down Main Street, but there's pipelines all the way from the treatment plant, excuse me, from the reservoir to the treatment plant. There are also three wells that are south of the treatment plant, Scotland Street Wells, 1 and 1A, and Prospect Street Well. And Scotland Street 1A is sometimes called 2. But those three wells pump into that same pipeline leading to the treatment plant. And one of the issues that I think we were dealing with is that when we pump a lot of water from the reservoir, it raises the hydraulic gradient, so it raises the pressure in that pipeline. And as you raise that pressure, those pumps at the wells cannot pump much, if any, water. And we did determine that during this event, that the pumps, two of them could not pump any water into that pipeline. And I'll get into how we fix that problem in a minute. Then there's two wellfields that are north of the treatment plant. There's two wells at the Fulling Mill site, and there's four wells at the Free Street site. These wells all pump to the treatment plant through common piping. So like the sources south of the treatment plant, the wells north, the pumping of one impacts how much you can pump from the other. So this is where we have limitations in the raw water system getting water to the treatment plant. The treatment plant has kind of plenty of capacity, so it's not there. This problem with the raw water system is not new. We've seen, I've seen in the last two years that I've been here, and I know our guys have expressed that they've seen it over decades. Could it be changed by the resizing of the pipes? Yes, yeah. When I get into, we'll talk about the engineering study we're going to do, I'll, I'll get into that.
Can you, at this point with the map?
Sure.
There were lots of comments about Accord Pond being like overflowing and full, and why were we having a ban?
Yeah.
Is this a good place to, or do you want to wait till you get into?
No, I think this is a good place. Yeah, so we can, this raw water system, the piping in particular, the ability to push water, pump water through that piping, piping system only has so much capacity, you can only push so much water through it. And on your other end, you've got pumps, and you could put in bigger and bigger pumps and push more water. That's one of the solutions. Paul to answer your question, it's bigger pumps, bigger pipes, or parallel pipes. Additional piping. Yeah, additional piping. Yeah, so you have more capacity in your piping. In the roadway? In the, yeah, I think most of this is in roadway. There's a section of the main from the reservoir that goes through, through some easement property, but most of it's in roadway. What's the age of the pipe? In the roadway? I don't know that.
I imagine it was built when the treatment plant was built, to get the, at least if you're referring to from Accord Pond.
Well, I noticed it's 20-inch. Is that right? Once it hits Main Street from Accord, it's a 14-inch feet onto Main Street, and then it goes to 20?
Yeah. I just don't know.
I think it's 1996.
Okay.
As I'm saying, the treatment plant was built in 1996.
Ninety-six.
Yeah, all of these sources used to pump right into the distribution system where they're located. And actually, I'm going to try to put this in context with the typical water system. So we own 80 water systems, and typically with a treatment plant like we have here in Hingham, it's treating water from one reservoir. The reservoir is usually sitting right next to the treatment plant, and either it's just up gradient, so the water just flows in, you don't need any pumps to get the water in, and/or if it's a little down gradient, you've got pumps right there pumping a short distance from the reservoir into the plant. So very simple raw waters. This is a complex raw water system compared to, I think, anyone that I've dealt with, and we have a lot of systems, so. Is there a way to prioritize where you draw from to keep the pressure up? Yes, there, there is, and I'm jumping forward a little bit. We've retained an engineering firm to look at what the limitations of the system are, where those limitations are, what are short-term solutions, what are long-term solutions. Part of it, though, is developing a hydraulic model. That hydraulic model actually has been developed, and what that model allows you to do is it allows you to test, if I turn this pump up to 500 gallons per minute, what happens to that pump? And allows you to, you know, theorize, if I put a bigger pump in here, what impact is it going to have? That model is, has been developed, but it needs to get calibrated. Any, any model of piping, including this one, you actually need to do field testing, and that field testing tells you, not to get into too technical details, but the roughness of the pipe, because the roughness of the pipe changes over time as tuberculosis, as stuff grows. Scour, things like that. So it needs to be calibrated, but we do have the model built. Is that based on present demand? Well, you can put in, the model allows you to put in whatever demands you want. Any model of piping, including this one, you actually need to do field testing, and that field testing tells you, not to get into too technical details, but the roughness of the pipe, because the roughness of the pipe changes over time as tuberculation, as stuff grows.
Scour, things like that.
So it needs to be calibrated, but we do have the model built.
Is that based on present demand?
Well, you can put in, the model allows you to put in whatever demands you want. You could do this year's, you could project out of 20 years. That's the value of the model, let you, we have a model for the whole distribution system that is calibrated, and that's how we came up with that fire flow mapping that I shared with Irma and with Chief Duff.
Were you able to identify where the 12% increase came from, or is it everywhere?
Where, in terms of which, whether it's Hingham Hull?
Yes, that, or which section of Hingham?
We, I mean, the only way we could figure that out is we do quarterly reads of our customers' meters. So since they're quarterly, I think it'd be really hard to draw conclusions. At some point, I would expect we'll go to monthly reads. The industry is moving more toward monthly reading.
The automated?
We have automated reading, I think 75% of the system.
Have you ruled out major leaks?
In the, well, we did a leak detection last winter, and there's another one scheduled. Usually, twice a year, we do leak detection.
Well, could this possibly be attributable to a major leak that hasn't been found within the system?
I think if there was a leak that size, it would have surfaced by now.
Okay.
And you wouldn't, the flow, the pattern, the peaks and valleys tend to be the same. If you took out the demand from the irrigating, you'd see that that wouldn't be able to, you're seeing it was pretty flat, then bang, you've got a big drop.
And people stopped irrigating.
Yeah.
We've got some rain.
You're right. When it rained, we saw, which way is backwards? When it rained, we saw that drop on the 4th and the 5th in system delivery, which means demand dropped off.
People turned the sprinklers off.
Correct.
That's why, by the way, I said, you know, number of rain days matters. We see demand on a system, when it rains even a little bit, we'll still see demand drop off. If we have a thunderstorm, people turn off their irrigation systems. And then we have the reverse issue, where we actually have to start turning wells off, where the tank will fill up too high. So I mentioned that the limitation is in the raw water system. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the investment that we've done in the raw water system in the last seven, eight years. This investment is all based on the fact that wells lose capacity over time. And so we've got nine wells. On a full-year base, about 80% of our water comes from the wells. And what happens to wells over time is that as you're drawing water into them, there's a well screen. If you could drop yourself down into a well, what you'd see around you is a wire mesh that's in the shape of a pipe, say 12-inch pipe, and that, the water's coming through that wire mesh, it's called a screen. But as you're drawing the water through that screen, you get, in particular, deposits of iron and manganese. The iron and manganese oxidize, they encrust themselves in the screen. They also encrust themselves in the gravel that's around the well itself. So every couple of years, depending on how much iron, manganese, and other contaminants are in the water, you have to redevelop a well. And redevelopment generally involves putting chemicals in the well, dissolving the material that's on the screen, and then mechanically surging the well, pushing water into the well, out into the gravel. You're trying to clean all that encrustation off, because of course, the encrustation keeps water from flowing into the well freely. But over time, actually, as you do that redevelopment, let's say you have to redevelop a well every two years, you may get, you know, it's your fifth cycle of that, and typically what happens is you never regain the capacity that you were getting. You may get after the first redevelopment, 95% capacity, second, 90%, and it just drops. So what we've done, what the company did in 2007 and 2008, we installed replacement wells for, at Free Street, we replaced well 2 with well 2A. We put in Scotland Street 2, or it was called 1A on the other map, and then we put in two new wells at Fulling Mill wellfield. We've also redeveloped a number of wells in the last couple of years. Free Street 2A, consider that was put in in 2007, 2008. We've had to redevelop it in 2010, 11, and 13 to keep its capacity up. Scotland Street Well was developed, redeveloped this year. Scotland Street 2 was redeveloped this year in 2011, and the Fulling Mill Wells were redeveloped in 2011 and 13.
John, on the Free Street 2A, the frequency of redevelopment, is that the soil around it, or?
I think it's very likely the contaminants, and I haven't, I'm not that familiar with that well, so I don't know what's driving that frequency, but typically, it's iron and manganese that do that.
Is it within industry norms?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I've seen, especially with iron and manganese, I've seen wells, they're in the two-to-four-year range, they have to be redeveloped, and then after doing that a number of times, you realize you're, it's this point of diminishing returns. And the reason that happens is, if you move outside that screen into the gravel, the redevelopment process can't get that far out into the gravel. So stuff accumulates in the gravel, say, eight, 10 inches from the screen, and no amount of surging is ever going to move that material. And so the well has lost capacity for the long term, forever.
John, I have a question. In terms of the replacement wells, I mean, is there a point in time where you may not be able to use that option in terms of, or is it something that you, that's easily done?
In terms of, when we hit a point where a well has lost so much of its capacity, redevelopment isn't going to help too much, so we put another well in?
Well, I'm going beyond that, in saying, if you're actually replacing the wells, not redeveloping, and so you're in a different location now?
You typically are within 50 feet. The DEP has a regulation for how far you can actually move away from the existing well with a replacement well, and I just don't remember off the top of my head that distance. But I think the Scotland Street 2 well is 50 feet approximately from Scotland Street The Fulling Mill Wells are right next to the well that they were replacing, so you typically put them within 50, 100 feet of the...
Following on Paul's question, would you add another well, just a brand-new well to get more capacity?
Some of these are additions, like it's Scotland Street, the Scotland Street 1 well, we left that in service, and we drilled Scotland Street 2 or 1A, and we use both of them. So in that case, Scotland 2 or 1A is called a satellite well, and it's designed just to get you back to the capacity that you had of the original well. Free Street 2A is more of a true replacement of Free Street 2. Free Street 2 well is an emergency well now, not used on emergencies.
How deep are these wells?
I think they're about 40 to 70 feet.
Oh, that's not deep at all.
No, these are, there's a, they're all overburden wells, they're not bedrock wells. Bedrock is the one, are the ones that are usually a couple hundred feet deep, or 1,000.
So there's a large subsurface water source that's determined by how?
There's an aquifer that lies underneath Hingham, and there's a large sand and gravel deposits, and that's what these wells are drilled into, the sand and gravel deposits. So the state actually has mapping that shows not only the aquifer, but it shows you the high-yielding areas of the aquifer, and not surprisingly, the high-yielding areas of the aquifer. And actually, don't, I don't know how they develop that mapping, but the high, oh, that's yours.
Start it off.
How were you able to quantify how much water is in the areas where you drill in the wells?
That's up to the hydrogeologist, I have to say, I'm not a hydro...
Is that part of the model?
No, no, the model is just for piping.
Is there any information source that you have available to you that would tell you how much water lies beneath the surface that you can draw from?
I think probably the best data on that is from a report done by a company called GZA in, I think it was 1999 or 2000. It was a report, I believe that was paid for by the DEP, that ended up with this, the Weir River Sub Basin being deemed a highly stressed basin. That report is full of good information about the aquifer, and how much the aquifer can actually yield in terms of water.
How often would they do a study like that?
Not often, because that's a, that was a unique study. I don't know what really prompted that study.
Can it recharge itself?
Well, the rainfall, rainfall recharges the aquifer. So it's a, there's a balance there.
What about a wastewater treatment plant?
What's it?
What about a wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, wastewater, I'm not sure if you were at the environmental forum back in, it was a couple, it was a couple environmental forums ago, back in, I think, February, March, but one of the folks there was Duane Lavangi from the DEP, and the question came up, you know, would DEP ever allow more water to be withdrawn than they allow right now from the Weir River Sub Basin? And if I recall what Duane said correctly, he said, if you wanted to remove more water than our current, than the current limit, they would want to see offsets. And one of the offsets, he said, would be, you know, if you want to remove another 100,000 gallons per day from the, from the, from the sub-basin, they would want to see that 100,000 gallons per day going back in through the wastewater treatment plant discharge. Duane can speak better than that, that's obviously the DEPs say, but they do allow offsets like that, as long as you're putting the water back into the sub-basin. So I'd like to describe the timeline through when our tanks were declining. So as I mentioned, so as I mentioned, our tanks were declining, and we ended up putting a lot of resources toward diagnosing our wells and trying to get more water from our wells, and that included internal staff and external staff, with vendors, and with an engineering firm that we brought in to help us. And we also requested more water from Cohasset, and they, and they did give us more water for, I don't know the exact dates, but I think it was, if you remember, it was like June 18th through July 1st, where they said, we can't give you additional water anymore. And we implemented the odd even restrictions. We notified people through two code reds and emails to town officials. Then the week of June 23rd, our engineers continued to evaluate the pumping systems along with our operators. We diagnosed and increased the flow from well 2A, and we did some mechanical controls evaluation of the Prospect Street well, because we weren't getting water out of that well. We wanted to make sure that it wasn't a clog and a flow meter, and, and what we believe it was, is it just couldn't, the pump could not push against the head, or the pressure that was being created by all of the water we were pumping from Accord Pond. And I'll get into how we addressed that in a minute. So on June 28th, we implemented a ban on irrigation systems and sprinklers, and we sent out three code red calls and emails to town officials to notify folks.
John, change your...
Oh, sorry. I'm changing it here and not there. On the 29th, we installed a temporary pump. We rented a pump from a company in Western Mass in our old Fulling Mill well. So we installed those two wells at Fulling Mill. They replaced what's referred to as a dug well or a cistern. It's about a 30-foot diameter by 30-foot-deep stone structure that's full of water. It was the original well at Fulling Mill for decades and decades, but we replaced that back in 2007 and '08. It remained a registered source, so we determined that we could continue using it, and we put a pump in there and connected the pump to a, using hose to a hydrant that leads into our raw water piping, and pumped, started pumping water into the plant from that well. On the 29th as well, I had called Hingham officials, I left messages with Ted and with Chief Duff, and also, I believe, Ronit spoke to Irma.
Spoke to both of you over the weekend many times.
On June 30th, we installed an additional pump. Again, we rented a pump at the Scotland Street well. So that well was not able to pump into the system, and what we did is, we realized that we could pump from our permanent pump into the suction side of this additional pump, and use that additional pump to pump into a, we hosed, put a hose in over to a hydrant that connects to our raw water system, and we used that additional pump to add capacity head to pump into the raw water pipeline. On July 1st...
Can I stroke you there for a second?
Excuse me.
Are you talking about fire hoses as a supplement to the existing structure in order to get up to the treatment plant?
No, the, Jeff, you've seen them.
Why don't you join us and identify yourself?
I'm Jeff Farrell, I'm Director of Operations.
Pull the chair up.
Yep.
What we did is down at the well site, using Fulling Mill as an example, we, there was still piping went down into the old well, we hooked a pump up, a standalone pump, it's a diesel-generated pump, that pulled the water out of the well. We connected that, and we call it fire hoses, but it's heavy-duty hose, it's a fire hose so that people can understand what it is. It's what they call suction and discharge hose. We connected that to a fire hydrant that is on the raw water lines, and most of the raw water lines throughout the system have hydrants on, so we can blow off wells, flush wells, to check them for quality, et cetera, and we tie it into that point. So you have the water coming, being pulled up out of the well by the pump, and then being discharged into the discharge part of the hydrant, and that went into the existing raw water piping. It's all within about 100 feet of each other.
Is that like a supplementary emergency system that is in place for situations like this?
That was one of the emergency system things that we did to address our, the high demands, to address our shortfall in supply.
We installed three of these pumps. One was at the Fulling Mill dug well, where you're pumping just directly out of the old well. The other two were at the Prospect Street well and the Scotland 1 well. And in that case, we're pumping out of an existing well with our permanent pump and into the suction side...
Into another pump.
...of one of these temporary pumps, and that temporary pump is then pumping into the hydrant, backwards into the hydrant. Now, the hydrants, they're connected to our raw water system. These aren't the hydrants in the distribution system.
So it's not a firefighter?
No, these are the hydrants for our use.
They're for our use. For blowing off the well. Sometimes you turn on a well and you want to blow the water off.
You could use it for sampling and things like that.
Yeah, are these pumps in place now? So in case we have a hot August?
Yes, they'll stay in place until we're ready to take them out.
Okay.
Which would be probably October.
You're going to have to use them that far in?
No.
The season?
No, we probably right after peak demand sometime in September.
But you'll leave them there just in case?
No, we'll return them, we'll use them for now.
Just in case through the peak period.
And then once the peak demand period goes off and system demands kind of return to normal, not this 5 million a day, down to like 2, then they can, I'm comfortable that we have the pumping capability to keep up with demand.
As it's presently defined?
With the restrictions.
No, no, no.
No irrigation.
Right now, with the, with the impact of the irrigation systems, those pumps are remaining in place. They will remain in place until after the summer demand period ends, typically around the 15th of September, because people stop watering their lawns at approximately that time.
All right. Although no one's watering now.
Right, well, yeah, that's, we're not supposed to be watering the lawns with irrigation systems, right? systems, right?
Correct.
Correct. And that's going to continue, correct?
The ban on the usage of irrigation systems and sprinklers?
Yes.
We are looking, that's a discussion. We, we have had that debate internally because with this additional pumping, we can meet the peak demands. But we look at, what are demands doing? So we'll look at, you know, the demand trend, look at the weather forecast. No one has a crystal ball, so you're looking at the weather forecast, trying to figure out, you know, is it going to be 90 and dry for the next two weeks?
You've fully committed your reserves, however. Right? You don't have another backup plan if this one doesn't work.
Well, these, these pumps that are in place, they're staying in place. That plan is going to stay in place for the summer to make sure that we are able to meet demands.
And, and fire demands, so that the tank levels don't drop...
Correct.
To a serious level.
Correct.
Jumping forward after this, can you address what happens when development takes place such that, and you can hold, hold the answer to that, but I think this whole discussion and all the work that you all have done has far-reaching impacts too, as we look to, as more and more development moves into Hingham. Because it's going to get here whether we want it or not. And then that's a real question for the town to sit down with the planning group, to say, how much development do we want and what kind do we want?
I think in terms of development, a couple, a couple key points. One, we have a water balance plan, which requires any development effectively more than a single-family home to offset their expected water usage with reductions in water usage elsewhere in the system. So in the past, most developers have chosen an option to retrofit, like a condo complex with low-flow toilets. And in that way, they offset what their usage is going to be. And I think it's one of the reasons we've been able to stay underneath the Water Management Act limit.
I think Mr. Lavangi referred to that as low-hanging fruit, however.
At some point in time, you run out of places to replace fixtures.
Do 40Bs have to adhere to these rules too?
Yes, yeah.
Every development has to come in and say, what is it projected?
Including 40Bs?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry to distract you a little bit.
Yeah, sorry. So our water levels returned to normal by July 2nd. And as you had mentioned, on July 11th, we met with Chief Duff and Deputy Chief Olson and Chairman, and Irma. We reviewed the available fire flows in the system, both at average tank levels and at the lowest tank level. And then we agreed, I think very importantly, we agreed on tank water level triggers, which means when Turkey Hill or Accord get to certain depths of water, then we call the fire department just to alert them that we're at that point in the tanks.
Where Hingham and Hall do mutual aid, if there were a fire in both, and we were at a low level in the tanks, would there be a problem?
Well, the, the tank at its lowest level had about 430,000 gallons of usable storage in it. And the design fire flow is about, this is from our engineers, about 240,000 gallons required. So there's more in, in the tank, available usable storage than for that designed fire flow of 240,000 gallons.
But wouldn't that be driven by the, the length and the intensity of the fire that's being fought?
That is, when I say designed fire flow, what, what engineers will do is they'll say, okay, the, the fire, there's an organization, insurance service office...
Fire standards, right.
Yeah, ISO. And, you know, they'll rate, they'll recommend what, a number of hydrants in the system. They'll take a sample of hydrants, and they'll recommend fire flows for those hydrants. And the engineer, when they looked at the system and evaluated, they evaluated tanks in the system back when the Strawberry Hill tank in Hall was removed. And at that time, they said, the designed fire flow is 2,000 gallons per minute for two hours, which is 240,000 gallons.
Is the consideration different for sprinklered structures that you might find in some of these bigger developments like the shipyard?
You know, I'm not familiar.
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah. The ISO, they recommend a fire flow for each hydrant based on the structures around that hydrant and how close the buildings are to each other. So...
Or the hydrant to the building.
I, you know, I don't know if that's one of the factors. There's a number of factors that they put into it, you know, what the structures are built, what the structures are constructed of. You know, but for a normal residential neighborhood with homes, you know, spread far apart, they may say, okay, 500 gallons per minute is recommended for that hydrant.
Okay. Keep going.
Sure. So, we implement restrictions each year for two reasons. One is because of this peak day issue, or peak days issue, meeting those daily demands. The other is to make sure that we, at the end of the year, are under this Water Management Act limit. So what this graph shows here is that we are allowed to withdraw, over the year, on an average day, 3.51 million gallons a day from the environment. And this shows data from 2004 to '12. And you can see that in some years, we're close to that 3.51. But through, I think, the work of the company in collaboration with the community, we've been able to stay under that limit. You may remember that Dwayne Lavangi at that forum said that most towns have not been able to stay under these limits. These limits were set based on actual water usage back in the early '80s. So the DEP looked at water usage for, I think it was three to five years in each water system back in the early '80s, and said, the average usage over that time period is your limit. This system has been able to stay under that limit. Most towns haven't been able to. What happens if you can't stay under the limit is you have to apply to DEP for a Water Management Act permit. We have a registration. The next step, if you go over this limit, is to ask for a Water Management Act permit. And that is a, that's a very involved process, because the DEP wants to make sure that by pulling more water out of the environment, that you're not harming the environment. In this system, I think, asking to take more water out of the environment has an added complexity, that this is a highly stressed basin. So withdrawing more water from this basin is going to get a lot more scrutiny from DEP. It may require us to find a source outside the Weir River Sub Basin. And there are locations within Hingham that are not in the sub-basin. So that's, it ends up being a very long, complex process.
Can you talk about where those other locations are while you're on the subject? Because that was going to be one of my questions. Where else do we have water?
I don't have the map in front of me, but our, our engineers did a, what we'll call a desktop evaluation a number of years ago, and they looked at available data from, from the state in terms of where there's good aquifer or water-bearing material and aquifers, and looked at available properties. And they did what's called a fracture trace analysis. They looked for fractures in bedrock, and they identified some places where bedrock wells might be viable.
How are those different in terms of the water quality or the quantity?
Bedrock wells typically do not yield as much water, and I think they're generally a lot more expensive because they're a lot deeper. You're drilling through the, through the overburden, through the sand and gravel, down into bedrock. And you're also trying to hit fractures. It's not an exact science, I don't think.
Do you remember, location-wise, where these might be?
One on the south side.
There was one?
One on the south side.
Okay.
One, actually, I think it was in the South Shore Industrial Park.
Yeah. Or South Shore Park now.
Yeah.
John, what would be a trigger to, to look closer at those, if we, if we reach higher levels of need, or is there something looking at now?
That is a excellent question. This is a, I'm going to contrast this with the state of Connecticut. In the state of Connecticut, you are required, as a water supplier, to have a certain margin of safety over your demands, which forces you to be always looking well ahead. And you're, you're required to project your water demands for 40 years. And if you see in year 15 of that 40 years, that you're going to, you're projecting to cut into your margin of safety, you are obligated to start looking for more water supplies. This state doesn't have that requirement. There's more of a restriction on developing new supplies. And now, I haven't been through this, but I'm told by our engineers that to even start the process for getting a permit for more water withdrawal, you have to be over the limit. And you have 100,000 gallons per day buffer in that limit before you get into trouble with DEP. So that limit is 3.51, so the 100,000 gallons would say you could be somewhere up to 3.61. And if you're in that range, then you can start talking about additional, getting additional water withdrawal through a permitting process.
Couldn't you, though, capture the water that's presently being lost in the system and recycle that into development potential in the future?
Yeah, I'm going to get into the unaccounted-for-water discussion, but it's a good point because to get a permit for more water, you need to show that the demand is actually there. And I think I mentioned before that the folks who put demand projections together is the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR. The state has tasked them with putting projections together. So you have to show that the demand is there. And there's two important metrics that they want you, they want you to be meeting the 65 gallon per capita per day limit on use. So, so that's, we take all the water that's used by our residential customers in a given year, we divide it by the population that's in the residential sector, and if it's higher than 65 gallons per capita per day, DEP wants you to bring that down through conservation efforts. So they want you to be under 65 gallon per capita per day, and they want you to be at least moving toward 10% unaccounted-for water.
Does the DEP publish statistics of each water system that shows the water loss in each of those systems?
Yes.
Where do we stand?
We are at 21% unaccounted-for, and I think the average in the state is somewhere between 13 and 14% unaccounted-for. So we recognize that as a problem. Is that my next slide, actually?
Actually, before you go to that, with the, with the work that was done on potential water sources, can we sometime get a map or an idea of where those, those sources are? And I'd be happy to meet with you all. Faith, can you hold a question? Or do you want to?
I don't care.
Yeah.
I'm telling you.
Do you want to go ahead and take that now?
Sure, yeah.
Faith, you need to come up and identify yourself.
Faith Lurain, 17, New Zealand, and the Weir River Estuary Park and Watershed Association. I believe Dwayne said that if you go through the permitting process, it's expected to take about 10 years. And they will, they do a lot of deep scrutiny on how you can save money. And it would really, a very optimal goal would be to get our water usage down to 30. That may be really pushing it. But 65 is on the high end. So, but I think it's important to put it into context to realize, we're not talking about a new development plan going in, but getting water instantly. This is a longer process.
Thank you. And I think that's what really John is trying to say in a very nice way.
One thing that I should add to that, the permitting process, if you get a permit, it is very likely, highly likely, that it will come with irrigation restrictions. We have a...
Annual basis, so not every year mandatory restrictions.
That's the, that's becoming, I think it's a requirement, they just updated the Water Management Act regulations. And I'm not well-versed in them because we don't have a permit.
Are those on the website too?
I believe those are probably published somewhere.
On the DEP website?
They're on the DEP website, yes, they are.
Okay. And I think they're, I think they're leaning toward irrigation restrictions. I know we have a permit in our Millbury system, and there's mandatory restrictions from May 1 to September 30th.
Could the state impose a condition of that nature on this system, regardless of what you were doing?
A couple of years ago, and I hope I'm getting my facts straight, because I was not involved in this, but the state, the DEP wanted to try to attach restrictions like that onto water withdrawals. Because water withdrawals don't have any restrictions on them. It's permits that come with restrictions.
Like a grandfather...
Exactly.
Yeah.
So the DEP tried to do that, and, and was unsuccessful getting that accomplished. Before I actually move off that topic, when you talk about, you know, the need for new supply, one of the options, and it's becoming more and more prevalent in the water industry, is conservation. And at an environmental forum that we held about a month ago, there was a gentleman from Sharon who described their experience with conservation. And the benefits of it are, they benefit you in terms of staying under Water Management Act permits or registrations, but it also helps decrease those system peaks, those couple weeks during the year that you have to meet peaks. And what I've observed in the industry is that there's a lot of money spent on building infrastructure to meet those peaks that last three to four weeks a year, and sometimes even shorter. So conservation has helped one town, I think you brought up Georgetown as well, as another town, they're trying to implement conservation to reduce the annual usage in those peaks. So I wanted to talk about a few related topics here. First, our engineers are in, in the process of evaluating the raw water infrastructure and identifying short and long-term solutions to ensure that we have adequate capacity. Second, I wanted to talk about our conservation efforts. A lot of them are focused on awareness. And Roni, did you want to cover this?
Sure. So, I mean, one, one way to, to promote conservation is through water restrictions. But in addition to that, I think conservation and education go hand in hand. And so as part of the outreach to educate the community, as you're aware, we've had the Weir River Watershed Matters series of forums that started last June 19th, and have had a series of five, I believe. The last one was on June 26th. We've had more than 500 people attend these forums, really feel a buzz of people understanding and wanting to understand more about what conservation means and what they can do to help. And as John said at the last forum, we had a speaker from Sharon. We also had Leila Parker, who is from the Division of Ecological Restoration, and she spoke about the health and the wellness of the Weir River. She's a watershed ecologist. And we also had Debbie Cook, who we actually partner with through Greenscapes, and she talks about smart watering and how to care for your lawn and, and plants that don't need as much water and still have a beautiful lawn and yard. At that, for that forum, we actually paired... At that, for that forum, we actually paired with Greenscapes and the Ware River Watershed Association, along with the Hingham Youth Hockey members, ranging from age 10 to, I think, 14, 15, along with the green team in Hingham High. And they created three public service announcements. You may have seen them on H-Cam. They've aired 126 times, and they air throughout the day. We also have a little contest going, and we posted them on YouTube. We've had 408 views. So, and they're all surrounding conservation, indoor and outdoor conservation. And the team that gets the most views, that gets the most votes, will get a, win a pizza party. So, it's, it's exciting getting the, the youth involved in it. We've also, we have a great relationship with the Hingham High Green Team, with Rick Swanson, and with, and with Katie, who heads up the Science Department and all the Hingham Schools. And we sponsored Waste Not Wednesday, which was part of their Green Week. It was Water Conservation Day. Their keynote speaker, J. O. Callahan, who spoke about water conservation, he's actually a storyteller that all of the students could view in the auditorium. We paired, we did a little quiz just to see how the kids in the high school understand water conservation for Waste Not Wednesday, and they had the whole week to answer. And then we drew a winner at the end of that week, and he could share, apparently Chipotle, Mexican restaurant is the hot, you know this, right? It's the hottest place for teenagers in town.
There you go.
So, we paired with them, and they offered, they actually donated a free dinner, and so the winner was able to share it with 10 of his friends. In addition, we, we do ongoing efforts with Greenscapes that does, it's at the fifth grade level is where the kid's learning about water systems and watersheds, and the impact of stormwater runoff. Part of that program, we fund the in-house, sort of in-school programs, and then the kids come to the treatment plant, and they have the benefit of having a treatment plant bred in their town, and they can learn a little bit about how their water, what it looks like when it starts the process, and what, you know, and how it is delivered to their home. One of the exciting things that were actually, two more things, actually. We launched the first-ever Aquarant Environmental Stewardship Award, so there, this was another idea with Rick Swanson. He thought, we don't have any senior awards that have to do with the environment. And so, it was a collaboration between the, the high school and ourselves, and we chose the first winner, Brendan Whitney, who is a high school graduate from this past year, green team member, and he received that stewardship award along with a scholarship. This weekend, we are working with Foster Elementary School to build an outdoor science center. And part of that will be, we have volunteers from the company and the community coming together to build raised beds. So, they're going to see the whole process of how you can, they have a rain barrel that we donated a couple of years ago, taking rain water to water the raised beds. They'll have a composter, and seeing that whole process, I think, really has an impact. And that'll be at the elementary level, and help the school also gain in their green. I know that they're, they're, all the schools are green, but I know that Foster has really done a lot of efforts in that, you know. So, that's a little, I think, you know, it's not just, I think, I think with working with the community, educating, and certainly the future of the town or the kids, you can really make an impact, so.
Are you going to continue the environmental forums? Because those really are good.
Yes.
The couple that I've been able to get to, they're very informative.
Yeah, they've been, they've been excellent. We've gotten great feedback from people, and we will continue. Summer seems like not a great time to have an event, so everybody's kind of off on vacations. We'll circle back in September.
Then secondly, when the ban is on, what is done for people, both residential and business? Because I won't squeal on them, but this weekend, we were at a certain business in town, and both days, the sprinklers were going the whole time. What happens?
Yeah, we have, we have letters, reminder letters, or I don't want to say that it's a, like a violation letter, it's more of a warning letter, just to kind of gently remind people that we're under restrictions and that there's no irrigating at all. And we just remind them that they can be fined. While we don't want to shut people off, we remind them, you know, and usually people take those warning letters seriously. So, we do get calls as well. We get anonymous calls to, I voicemail at 5:00 in the morning saying, my neighbor's watering.
Yeah, I was going to say, my neighbor, but I don't want anybody to know.
Right, right. Well, they don't say who they are, and then they say, I live on such and such, you know, they don't even say where they live, and they say so-and-so, you know, five, I don't want to say a street, because someone could be in the room that's been watering. And so, that, you know, we do our best, and we try to hand it to the person at home and not just leave a note.
How's that working?
Some people are very good receiving it, sorry, you know, they apologize. Other people, you know, take it and humped them off the way.
Some are not happy. You're not going to please them all.
Some are not happy.
So, you're really going for the 95%?
The, you can see the, when we first went out with the restrictions and the man, the full restrictions on the first night, we had troops out there checking out the communities, both Hingham and Hall. There was a lot of sprinkler use going on. The next night, it dropped by a small percentage. But as time has gone on, people have got the message, they've seen the signs on the, you know, on the post, they've, they've heard about it in the paper, and they've been very good. You can see it, you know, the part of our being able to recover so quickly is because people are abiding. But there are people that don't.
Until by the collar of the law?
You can't, drive by.
Usually, yeah. They have to explain it to their neighbors.
Okay.
So-
Our favorite topic, right?
Yes. Unaccounted-for water. So, our engineers have just completed a water audit of the system. And for this water audit, we used an approach, our engineers used an approach developed by the American Waterworks Association. It's the leading organization in the industry. And with this, so the water industry is moving more to a more sophisticated approach to evaluating where water goes in a system. And metrics like unaccounted-for water, and what we call non-revenue water, which is the difference between the water that goes out of our meters at our treatment plant, and the water that gets, that goes through all of our customer meters, the difference between those two is non-revenue water. That number, that metric is used, and so is unaccounted-for water. But the industry is just getting much more sophisticated with tools to evaluate where your water's going. And it provides utilities with more guidance on how to solve the problem. And it also, I think just as importantly, it, it provides for more robust data analysis, or, excuse me, more robust analysis of the quality of data. And that's important if you're going to compare utilities to each other, or if you're going to compare a utility over time, you want to make sure that the data is of decent quality. That's one of the things that the AWWA approach is good for. So, this is just one page, one output page from AWWA-developed a software. You input all your data into the software, and there's a bunch of information that comes out, including this page. And what this shows going left to right is what the amount of water we're putting into the system, and this is 2013 data. So, it shows 1.2 billion gallons going into the system over, in 2013. It shows that, can't read those numbers, 941 million gallons of that is authorized, what's referred to as authorized consumption. Now, 921 million gallons of that is billed authorized consumption, and then there's unbilled authorized consumption as well. And some of that unbilled authorizes things like the, the water that we use at the treatment plant. Our treatment process actually requires water in some cases. It also includes fire hydrant usage, and what we refer to as bleeders. We have mains that are buried at shallow depths, in particular in Hall, and you read, leave water bleeding out of that main all winter long, so the main doesn't freeze.
And we've got one over in near World's End, right? In Hingham?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the cover on that main?
Well, it varies. Some of them have pretty limited cover, because Hall was a seasonal community, and they used to actually shut the mains off in the winter. So, they didn't feel the need to bury them very deep.
Oops.
Are you able to track the amount of times the hydrants are used? So, I mean, you've mentioned hydrant use a number of times in your presentation. I'm just curious as to whether that's just a small infinitesimal proportion, or whether it's-
There is, there is within this 20, actually, it's in the unbilled, un-metered consumption, the 11.6 million gallons. Within that is all of that data, and how much of that is hydrant usage. So, also in here, apparent losses, shows 3.3 million gallons. That's made up of things like unauthorized consumption or theft. Also, you see one here that says customer meter inaccuracies, and we have a zero in there right now. We'll probably update that. What that means, our meters, excuse me, our, the meters that we have in our customers' homes, over time, they become less and less accurate. And when we remove them, we test them, and we generally find, on average, that they read about 1% low. Doesn't sound like a big number, but it's 1% of all that water consumed. So, it ends up being like 9 million gallons over the year. So, there's some edits that probably need to be done here, because we know that that water is actually, you know, we can tell from our meter accuracy results, that water's being used that we're not actually capturing with our meter.
Where do you think your biggest losses are?
Well, that's the, the 275 million gallons, that's called real losses. And that is in, is three categories shown here. Transmission mains, or the distribution system mains, services, and then overflows at tanks. Now, overflows at tanks because we have a SCADA system and guys, excuse me, a monitoring system and guys watching it 24 hours. That doesn't happen often in this system. And-
Those the water tanks you're referring to?
Yeah, our water tanks. So, I was told by one of our guys that maybe once a year, that they'll reach the, reach the overflow, and water will spill out. So, where are the real losses? I think it's a combination of the water mains, the transmission, distribution mains, and leaks on service lines. And that's our service lines, and also service lines, we don't own the service line all the way to the home. We only own it to the curb. So, the service line from a curb to someone's home is all, also ends up being these real losses, because meters are typically in someone's home. So, any water that's leaking in the service line under their yard, that comes out as a real loss in the system.
It's not captured by the meter, so we wouldn't know they have a leak.
Yeah. So, what does this all mean? It means that there was a number of recommendations that came out of that report. The ones that I think are most impactful and worth discussing here are, first of all, implementing a zoning program. And what a zoning program is, is installing flow meters in the distribution system that allow you to measure flow in various parts of the system. So, a group of neighborhoods, if you can put a meter in that allows you to measure the flow into that, that area of town, then what you do is, you can do two things with that data. You can look at nighttime flows. So, if you have a grouping of 500 homes, and you can meter all the water going into that group, that area, and you can look at nine, nighttime flows, in the winter, you can make a pretty good estimate of how much water should be moving into that zone of 500 homes in the middle of night, and figure out if it's out of the norm. And of course, if it's out of the norm, you know there's a leak there. Also, you can match the flow into an area with the homes that are in that area, their consumption. And you can actually do a non-revenue water calculation for that group of 500 homes, and compare it to other groups of homes in the-
You model the homes?
Excuse me?
You model the neighborhoods?
Yeah, so you can, and that'll tell you where your greater leakage is. And then what you do with that data is, one, you can direct your leak detection efforts and fix leaks. Instead of doing the whole system twice a year, you can focus your efforts more directly into problem areas of the system. And also, it allows you to prioritize your main replacements. We are updating this year the Capital Efficiency Plan, which has the data on all of our pipe segments in our whole system, and then based on all the data we collect on number of breaks, material main, soil, soil conditions, all that data goes into a model, and then the output is a prioritization, prioritization of mains to be replaced. Well, what will go into the model, once we do the zoning, is this information as well. So, it's more information to, to identify where we should be replacing water mains. We also want to implement a large meter audit program. And Jeff, I know you were involved in this years ago, we find like, I'll give an example, in a hotel, we have to put a big meter in, because sometimes during the day, there's a lot of water flowing into the hotel. But in the middle of night, when, you know, people flush the toilet or running one sink, that water goes through the meter and isn't detected. And there are ways that you can address that problem and detect that water. Because if you don't measure it, it comes across as a real loss, like a pipe leak. We want to replace all customers greater than 10 years old. We have, I think it's over 2,000 meters in our system that, these are customer meters, that are either over 10 years old, or the age of the meter isn't recorded in our, in our system.
We just had ours replaced.
Ah, okay.
Thank you.
Accurate.
I don't know if I'm happy about that.
Got to get into your house to replace it, so.
I know, I'm not so sure I'm happy about that, now that I hear that ours might have been-
Reading low?
Yeah.
Remember, the average is 1% low.
Thank you, John.
And we want to provide an online hydrant usage form for, for the fire departments. We have that form in other states. We, we have to get it implemented here. What that'll, it facilitates the fire departments recording hydrant usage. You know, everyone's busy, and it's just so much easier if they can get on, onto the internet and make a couple clicks and add, you know, we use this much water at such and such a hydrant this afternoon.
It'll read it?
No, it won't read it. It requires someone to estimate. The fire department staff have to estimate how much water they use.
Pressure and time?
Approximately, that's how it works. Say, they're pretty, when they're operating their equipment, they're running their, their equipment tells how long they've run it, how many gallons usually, they can calculate how much water they put on a fire or use for training. And then with the form, which will be up and running shortly, they can go right on to our website and just put in where it occurred, some data, you know, how long, how many hydrants did you use? We can even calculate it if they can. Because I know with, from the engineering analysis, that we've conducted how much pressure and available flow is in that area at certain specific hydrants, so we can calculate it for them. But as long as they provide us the time and when that it did happen, it's a good tool.
And it's the type of data that the DEP wants to see every year in what, in the annual reporting. They want to see a robust capture of data. And finally, we want to increase the frequency of production meter testing. We test our production meters once a year, which is a requirement. We want to do it twice a year. Most of them we find are accurate, but it does, there's no harm in doing them twice a year. And then, I know we're past our time, I'm sure, but a couple of system updates. On Free Street, you may recall that we started a project in 2012 to correct the water main break problem on Union and Free Streets. So, this is the third year, and we've just completed the final phase, and it's the installation of 2,000 feet of new main on LaZelle and Free Streets. Within the next few weeks, that main will be, the chlorination and the disinfection of the pipe will be done, the services will be connected, and we'll be able to take the old main out of service. And then final paving of that stretch will be done in the fall. Also, regarding our SCADA project, at our treatment plant, we have a computerized system that monitors-
What is SCADA?
SCADA, sorry, is Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. And what SCADA systems do is they, they allow you to monitor and control equipment, monitor equipment and- water quality, and then, control equipment remotely, from a control room, or even from a remote facility, you can control equipment.
What I think is neat about the one they have now, is it's all pictures, so that you've got the tank, and when it's in a good level, it's green...
Yeah.
And when it changes, when it lowers, it will go to red, so the operator...
User-friendly?
Yeah, well, it's gone from being really a Microsoft-type of all numbers, to more of an Apple, Macintosh picture type thing, well, some of us techies prefer the old ways, but I, I think the one I saw at your place, and our sewer department has one, I know the electric company, the light plant, has one that's fascinating, with the whole network.
That's up at the Main Street facility?
Yes, yeah, we have the, the, we finished the first phase of the project, the second phase we're going to do this winter, so both the old and the new SCADA system are running in parallel, it is definitely a much more user-friendly...
Oh, it's like night and day.
Yeah, but the other, the other advantage of it is, its equipment, there's a lot of hardware that goes with it, it's not software, but it's equipment that actually is still supported by manufacturers, you know, the new equipment is supported by manufacturers, and our system is designed to allow remote access through secure channels, for our vendors to troubleshoot, or, we have a SCADA department, that can also troubleshoot and fix things remotely, so there's much more redundancy and reliability.
That's big.
Yeah, we've been, we've been, back in, I think 1993 is when we really started implementing SCADA, and we built, gosh, three or four large treatment plants, so we've learned over time, how to design the systems really well, operators are actually in the design process from the very beginning, so they got what they need out of the system. Next is treatment plant improvements, the treatment plant requires continuous investment, I think we're spending about $100,000 to $150,000 a year on mechanicals, electrical, and controls, this year, in the last six months, we replaced two pumps and installed, updated instrumentation, and we're also replacing the roof on the facility, it had showed that it had reached its useful life, so we're replacing it. And finally, I just wanted to mention the DEP award, a few months ago, we received an award from DEP for our performance in 2013, in the Hingham Hall system, and only 19 water systems in the state received the award, the 1,700 water systems in the state, 19 of them got the awards, two of those 19s were actually our systems, one was this one in Hingham Hall, and another one was in Millbury, so, I'd like to thank our staff in Hingham Hall for the hard work they put in, to help us receive that award.
I was going to ask you about that, I'm glad you had it on one of your slides.
Congratulations.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you.
Why don't we turn the lights on, and Michael, thank you for your patience, because, but I'm sure you're finding this kind of fascinating, too.
Michael.
Well, you, Michael is very polite, right. Let me, shall I open it up for questions from the audience?
Yes.
And then we can continue. No, no, wait a minute, you might have some, let me open it up to the audience, and then we'll continue with more questions, so if you would, if you've got a question, come up, state your name, where you live, Hall is okay, too, and I see we've got some people from Cohasset also, so, Al was first, and John, you're second.
My name is Carlton Allen Chambers, I live at 86 Central Street, the Lincoln School Apartments for the Elderly, I live on the third floor, which is the penthouse unit, overlooking the armory, I note occasionally, that when I turn my water on, there is very little pressure, I mostly notice that, and I, I was listening to your comments about pressure variations, I mostly notice that in the morning, when I'm preparing a coffee. Being on a sprinkler system, it's supposed to be considered a, a safe apartment building, and I wondered if we're, any of our tenants are at risk for failure of the sprinkler system, if the pressure's way down, I was glad to have Mark here for that question, thank you.
That could be a lot of issues, that could be, not, you know, the, the pressure in, in, being as we ride off tanks, the pressure's pretty constant, unless the tanks get very low, it could be the demand in your building itself, that's creating a lower pressure, being as you're on the third floor, maybe, you're just like our system, except it's a microcosm, a smaller, if a lot of people using water at the same time, you'll see the pressure go down, it could be also, it could potentially be undersized piping, and it could be also something on our end, so we'll have to come and check it out, see if, take a pressure out to your property, see what it is, and compare it to the elevation in the tank.
Yeah, usually, when I, when, early, I am up early every morning, I'm talking four foot, very...
So am I.
And it takes a long time, to fill a cup.
I'm surprised, it could, could be something very simple, let us check, see what our pressure is, and do you have a maintenance person, do you have maintenance personnel there, that take, do you have a maintenance person there?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we can talk to him, thank you.
John?
I responded to that question.
Okay.
This is a point, Mark, there's a point, chief, this is a point of information, building fire protection sprinkler systems are fed into the buildings by separate water main, independent of the domestic water supply, so because there's a problem, it may be a problem on the domestic side, it does not mean there's a problem on the fire protection side, and secondly, it's very important, Mr. Chairman, and that happens, instantly, write the time and the date down, so they can look at that, they can look at this stuff and say, well, the water, the water tank at Turkey Hill was at 65 feet that day, you've got a problem in your building, versus the water tank on Turkey Hill was 22 feet, and yeah, it is an issue, that, of the amount of water in the system, so, and if, any Hingham resident, if you have low water pressure, you need to immediately call somebody, and let us know, time, date, but do it immediately, because, again, if you're at a hill somewhere, there's a problem, we need to know right there, thank you.
John?
Thank you, good evening, the last survey I have is a PERDEX survey, 2012, and I noticed in the area of towns, that the water quality is trending down in Hingham, could you address that?
In terms of what characteristics did you know?
The quality, the quality of the water, where are we today?
Oh, you're asking the question, I thought you said you noticed.
2012 is the last PERDEX survey I have.
Does CCR, Customer Confidence Report, Consumer Confidence Report?
No, that was...
Yes, CCR.
Are you saying a survey that someone asked you questions, or, or a document?
Document.
The 2013 just went out, so...
Yeah.
You should have received it by July 1st.
The Consumer Confidence...
I think it was the last, I think it was the last one, not, not this one, the one before that.
Yeah, you were, you're looking at the 2012 one.
Yeah.
So the water quality, well, first, our water quality is, there, there are countless limits on water quality parameters, whether it's turbidity, which is a measure of the cloudiness of the water, chlorine residual, disinfection byproducts, Jeff...
VOCs.
VOC, yeah, we test for hundreds of contaminants.
Yeah.
I don't remember in the 2012 report, if it pointed out, was there a contaminant that was...
Not that I recall.
Over a limit.
It's different towns, how they...
If you, so you haven't received the, the Consumer Quality Confidence Report, it's a CCR, it goes out every year around this time, so you didn't receive that?
No.
You, give me your address, can I have your address, sir?
65 Hershey Street, Hingham.
It's also online.
Yeah, but I want, you're, you're looking at the 2012 one, and you've got a question about that one.
That was going to be my answer.
Well, I mean, the other towns are trending good, and we're trending, we're trending bad, Hingham, that's what it says, the PERDEX survey, 2012, the water quality.
This must not be the CCR.
I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah, I'm not sure, the Consumer Confidence Report, that we put out each year, and every utility puts out the same thing, it's a, it's a requirement, lists the contamin, the contaminants that we have to test for, and how we measure up against those, and we haven't had a violation in the system in terms of one of those contaminants for many years, and in terms of the water quality, I know our treatment plant is running very well, and just in terms of, I'll talk about the aesthetic measures, turbidity in particular, you know, that's a measure of the cloudiness of the water, we're well below the, the regulatory limit, but I'm, I'm curious, and I'll have to look at the 2012 one, just to see if there was anything in there.
Here are your towns, too, yeah.
John, I kept a copy of it, I can send it to the two of you.
We've got, we've got copies, yeah.
Okay, can you, can you take a look at it, and then, maybe...
Yeah, we'll get that.
Give us some information, and we can...
My address, yeah.
We can, what we can do is, we'll set aside a little bit of time to feed back some of the questions...
Sure.
That we don't have an answer, hang on one minute, sir, Pete, you're next.
Joe McElroy, North Cohasset, Hingham Hall, and North Cohasset.
Yes, sorry.
The, the outer reaches of the water distribution system clearly would be of major concern, as we heard in the Hull Town Meeting, comments with you, and so forth, I, it's very clear to me, that we have a water shortage, a chronic water shortage, and Hull and Cohasset, North Cohasset, have to become part of the solution, rather than overly dependent on your watershed area, and so forth, whether we're talking about for safety purposes, a relook at water towers, relook at wells, North Cohasset, the Cohasset Golf Course, has an incredible potential for well water, selling water from Cohasset, I don't think, town manager's in the corner over there, I don't think Cohasset is on any water restriction, wasn't a week ago, it's, it's not on any water restriction, another potential is to take North Cohasset demand off your system, for both Hingham, or Aquarian, whoever's running the system, you got the MWRA, Wamuth Water Interconnect, which would require a buy-in, there's no low-cost, simple solution to these things, but whether Cohasset could top off your water when the water reserves are sufficient, and so forth, the water towers, there's just a zillion things, but I feel like it's an isolation, that Hingham, we're overly dependent on your watershed area, and we can help out with proper coordination.
Thank you, Pete?
Very good, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Peter Thopolis, 17 Volusia Road, Hingham, and, little question, because I've been on the dump committee about 100 and some odd years before the fire in Salem, but, one of the things was, in the late 80s, we had to increase our monitoring wells, I think from nine to 12, and the primary purpose for this expenditure is the plume, or the leachate, which would affect the aquifers, which supplies all the water, now, I haven't thought of this until recently, is, what if it did impact the aquifers that supply the waters, and I'm not sure we have a, you know, I'm thinking back a little senile now, but, what was done, but the big thing was, the aquifers was a big reason for this expenditure, and obviously, you know, quantity, you know, you've done a great job, now, maybe explain quality, and if this leachate plume happens to migrate to an aquifer, I never asked the question, what do we do?
I'm not familiar with that plume, so, I'm not sure, not sure where it is in relation to our...
All right, but we did spend money to get monitoring wells.
Let me, let me say this, each year, when we do our annual reporting to the state, there is a, there's a portion of that report form that identifies the, the risks around each source, so each well and the reservoir, so if that plume is within that, it'll be identified in there, and, and we've also looked at, you can get mapping, so we've, we've created mapping to look at any spills that have happened within our Zone 2, which is the, the area from which our wells pull, and I just don't recall off the top of my head, seeing anything in there that was significant, but that was about a year and a half ago that it was done and happened.
This was 20 some odd years ago, we had a hydrologist there, way over my head, about every, the streams go every which direction, under the dump, landfill, transfer station.
I think that's the purpose of the monitoring wells, because they're checked periodically, we have instances where there's monitoring wells, where we, we monitored a plume like over...
Right, so you get a report from our monitoring, our health department?
Not on these.
Not on these, we haven't gotten any report, but...
Right.
That's where I would seek to see if there's anything going.
To a layman, that was scary, they started listing out arsenic, strychnine, like that, all the elements, but it's well within limits, because it's in every water system, so, no questions, so, still no answer.
Mark?
Well, don't you have a plume up at Queen Anne's Corner that you're monitoring, or is being monitored?
I don't, uh...
Yes, no, I don't know?
No, okay, we've looked at the, as I said, the state has mapping that shows where, where spills have occurred, and I looked at that mapping a while ago, and there weren't any risk, we also had, we have a watershed department, who comes here like once a year, and they look for risks that aren't part of that mapping, so we do have, we do have a structure in place to check for risks, I would need to check on this plume at Queen Anne's Corner.
I'll stick that, I've been trying to do a follow-up list, which...
Sure.
Mark?
Mark Cullings, 44 Spring Street, this has been very helpful, I've just given you a list of questions that I had sent to the, to the selectmen earlier this afternoon, and they're questions that had come up from the beginning, the rapid-fire three escalations that you did in, in water restrictions, up through today, and, and you've answered, or addressed some of the questions, but, begging your, your indulgence, if we can just go through them, and you've given us a whole lot of information, it's been very educational, and you've begun to maybe wrap your arms around some of the problems, but I'm particularly interested in Aquarian Water Company's performance...
Okay.
...this year, and the past, over the past couple of years, to see, be sure that we're going in the right direction, it sounds like we are, and that's, that's encouraging, but, again, the experience this early, early summer has been, it's been disturbing, frankly, and...
And, Mark, maybe could you...
Yeah.
Only address the ones that they've not addressed?
Because they have been...
I think they've done a good job with most of these.
Yeah, explaining the, the rapid-fire escalation, you did touch on that, but I do have a question of whether or not the, your customers were given adequate time to respond to those, those early restrictions, and they happened, bang, 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 all the way to the last one, which was, don't wash your cars, and you didn't tell us really why, although if we go back to the restriction, and the, the reverse 911 call that we got, there was the, the phrase excessive demand, but we didn't know about water standpipes, you addressed that, and you addressed that, when you came before these folks, and in your piece in the paper, but, communication, I mean, that's, that's huge, and I, I would just suggest that it could have been better, that's just an editorial comment.
And I appreciate that feedback, I know that we've received feedback, that there was some confusion about, you know, are handheld hoses allowed?
Yep.
And, lesson learned for us to be clear on those...
You told us what not to do?
Yeah.
But you didn't tell us why, and I had the experience of meeting one of your fellows at, at the Fulling Mill Station, and he said, very simply, he said, there are people in Hull, on the hill, who have low water pressure, and that, I got it, immediately, you know, that's the matter of community neighborliness, and as, as soon as he said that, okay, we, I know, there's a, there's a problem, and... okay, we, I know, there's a problem, and we need to fix it. Going down to number three, is there a water supply shortage for Hingham, Hull, and Cohasset customers? It doesn't sound like it. The problem seems to be in your ability to deliver the water.
The challenge is in that capacity of the raw water system.
Yep.
We do have room under that annual permit. Now, that's, you know, in terms of the 3.51.
And the 21% water loss is included in that.
Yes, yeah. And that, of course, ends up, that is a high priority.
But that's been going on for a whole long time.
It's fluctuated over, I think someone recently told me, I forget, we were at lower numbers years ago, so...
Sorry?
Yeah, we've been at 16, we've been at 10, we've been at 18.
But they've been getting worse, and they have not been addressed, but now you are, are you telling us that they are going to be addressed?
Yeah, and then first...
Recommendations, I saw, these are recommendations, but are they going to be implemented?
That will be done. The first thing I wanted to do is have someone look at it comprehensively, so that we were making smart choices about where money's spent.
I understand that. I wish it had been done five years ago.
They weren't here five years ago.
Well, no, wait a minute. Well, okay.
Aquarian was.
Aquarian was.
Lower five years ago, so it was a lot lower.
But this is it. I mean, all of a sudden, we have a crisis situation on our hand, and my estimation has taken a long time, or it's been building and building and building. And the important thing is to get our arms around it and get it fixed. This is a question that I think is important. If water supply, that is, the aquifer, the reservoirs, the wells, are taken out of the equation, restrictions, and the DEP restrictions, could you give all of your customers 100% of the demands all of the time?
I don't understand the question.
If you take the restrictions, you know, that there's no water shortage, we don't think that there is...
The job's a lot easier, I would say.
If there are no restrictions...
Is your pumping, is your delivery capacity sufficient to deliver 100% performance?
On peak days, we have that, we have that challenge. I mean, right now, we have these temporary pumping systems in. We're in good shape, but on peak days, we have, we have a challenge meeting those demands. And that's been the case for a while.
Okay.
But no company, no utility engineers for 100% for peak day. I know the phone company engineered for 80%.
Well, we're on mandatory water restrictions indefinitely.
Understood.
Okay. The company, in the verbal announcements that you give out and your press releases, you always talk about the DEP restrictions, and you've addressed that today. We're consistently below it, and we've learned that should we be consistently above it, that there is a long, complicated process, but the restrictions can be eased. So that's helpful to know. But when you cite in water restrictions, DEP restrictions, mandatory limits to the draw on the water, it's really not an issue based on the graph you just put up there, because we are, have been consistently below it.
We've been consistently below it, but what that graph doesn't show is, in previous years, the company was above that limit, and the implications were significant for, it was actually the predecessor company. They ended up with an administrative consent order from the DEP to reduce it below the limit. So...
I have a question.
There's two reasons we call for restrictions, and we've done them, what, eight out of 12 years?
We've been running the system that we know of.
Yeah. And it's those two, it's the two issues. It's the meeting the peak day, and then at the end of the year, being under that 3.51. So both of those are important.
On that topic, Paul has a question.
John, just briefly, the limit, the state limit, that's an average that you arrive at. So in the summertime, it exceeds that amount, but in the cooler, colder months, it's below that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mark, on these, I think they've gone through most of these.
Well, I'm struck by the 12% increase in demand, and that question came up earlier.
Yep. We asked where it was coming from.
Yeah, and has, and a corollary question is, your pumping capacity last year versus this year, is it the same, or has it gone up?
Right now, we're back up where we were last year.
Okay.
But we weren't able to get there in late June. And we are doing, our engineer is doing an evaluation to figure out, you know, what caused that.
Last question, and presumably you have service agreements with all three towns. Are you, are you meeting criteria, all of the criteria for all of the three towns?
We don't have service agreements with the towns, so I'm not sure what that...
So you don't have an understanding with Hingham, Cohasset, and Hull, or what your performance is going to be?
No, we're, it's really through the DPU regulations, so I guess that's the closest thing to it. The Department of Public Utilities regulates us, and they have a set of rules and regulations.
And you've been compliant with it?
Yeah, I believe, yes, I believe we have.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
And we'll make sure they get the whole list of questions and can respond. Kirk?
I think you just gave it, or maybe you gave it to us.
Well, we'll send it to you electronically.
Thank you.
Kirk?
Yeah, Kirk Schultz. I'm a member of the Hingham Board of Health, and not only that, a member of the Hingham Water Supply Committee.
Which has now three new members, and when we have the first meeting, we'll talk about supply.
That'll be fabulous. And been a member of the Water Supply Committee for a long while, from 1999, I believe. And so I noticed we have a number of people here tonight, and what I would do is, for those people interested, you know, come to a Water Supply Committee, because we have Aquarian there, and we go into these issues in a lot more detail, and we have that ability to follow up with these things. And so it's nice to go through this process, but we spent a lot of time tonight...
Yes, we did.
...on things, kind of rehashing that we go through on a regular basis. So I invite you to come to the Water Supply Committee meetings that we have on a regular basis. For a while there, we hadn't, because of the Water Supply Acquisition Study Committee, and a little bit of a pushback from that, but we've now re-engaged and become more involved in the process, and having a full complement of members is very helpful. And I was going to ask that question.
I'm very, I'm very happy, and I'm happy you're still on it. You have done a tremendous amount over the years I've known you, on wastewater, on water supply, and just been very engaged.
It's not that complex. Well, the problem we have in Hingham is really not that complex. And Paul brought the issue. We're not going to double the pipes that we have throughout the ground to meet a couple weeks' worth of problem. Our problem's in the summer with irrigation systems. That's our problem. And so we need to address that, and the Water Supply Committee, a number of years ago, proposed, and Paul was there, yeah, and the advisory committee?
Oh, we all ran for cover.
That's right. And so I think that's something that may have come around full circle, and hopefully that we'll be bringing that issue back up, because it allows us to use irrigation systems in the town, because we want to have nice-looking lawns. We want to just use that water wisely, so.
And Kirk, I'm also looking very much forward to the Water Supply Committee working with the Weir River Watershed Organization to really examine the aquifers and the supply. And I think now that we've, because there's three great people that have been named to water supply, so that's going to be a very neat committee. And getting to know the people on the Weir River Watershed Committee, that's, and we're going to be putting a couple more people on that.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time with that outside of the basin search for additional water supply. But I think that the low-hanging fruit is, again, attacking the irrigation system issue. Thank you for pointing...
And thank you. I went ahead and let this go, because there's an awful lot of information that John and Roni and our new friend down there, I think you're going to be very busy.
I am right now.
I'm gonna, Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm a fire chief. I do think it's important that the board and the residents of Hingham do hear from the Fire Department with regards to this. I am comfortable with the current levels of water that's in the system and the pressure that's in the hydrant. I am comfortable currently that if we had an incident, a fire, a serious fire, that the system will meet the demands. I was concerned back around July 1, about it, I was very concerned. I monitor this on a daily basis. I monitor it from my own home, as a matter of fact. And I happen to live in an area where when that tank level gets really down low, that my home can be affected, which might be a benefit, because if it gets down, I'm going to know it personally. We do have, we have reached a very good agreement with the Aquarian Water, that they will notify us when those tanks get low, if they get low again. We have another six or eight weeks of concern, very much concerned if it continues to be dry. We could go into this again. I don't believe that'll happen. The Fire Department does alternate or changes response patterns. When we know that the water tanks are low, we increase the number of apparatus to respond to a call. We haven't had to do that yet, but we did make an agreement with Hull during the July 4th weekend, that had, they had an incident, we would immediately dispatch equipment to And having a four-town dispatch center, three of the towns, Hull, Cohasset, and Hingham, get dispatched out of the center, so if there's an issue there, the water issues, although it's the Aquarian's problem, the water issues can be addressed in a single dispatch center with regards to apparatus response, increasing things. I think that's a big plus. That's the plus for the Shrek. We have, we could tailor our training. I regret to inform you that there'll be no foam fund today, no foam fund at the Public Safety Day, that the Police Department and Fire Department...
Re-select when we're going to show up to play in the foam, darn.
We do need, I do believe we need a better enforcement program. When restrictions are declared, people need to stop watering. I mean, is it more important to have a green lawn, or is it more important to have the fire hydrant in front of your home have water in it? And I have been through a situation in the 1980s where hydrants within this community had zero water in them, zero, over a period of several hours, due to something that we're similarly going through. We do notify the water company when we have heavy usage of hydrants, doesn't happen that often. And I am concerned about water main breaks. They're very good about, well, Aquarian's very good about notifying us if there's a break anywhere in the system. But I do want to assure the residents that currently, they do not have to be concerned. There is adequate water, water pressure in the system and the hydrants for firefighting, both industrial, commercially, and residentially. Thank you. I'm willing to take any questions as well.
Thanks, Chief. And I want to thank you and the deputy and the Aquarian people for sitting down and going through. I learned a lot from the discussion on the different nodes and how things change when the water levels. And it is a concern. So I think, do we have any more questions that haven't been asked? I thank everybody, I especially thank Michael for his patience, but I thought this was a good discussion, which is why I went ahead and let it go, because you all have given us an enormous amount of information. There will be a quiz.
Just...
Win a Chipotle party? No, just kidding.
Can we have a pizza? It is, if you haven't seen the SCADA system, it really, it's quite interesting, and it is, it is user-friendly now. So thank you all very much, and thank everybody for coming also. And we'll see you at the Water Supply Committee meeting, and then we can have the Water Supply Committee in here. And I only had three follow-ups, which I'll get to John and Roni on, location of potential future sources, the 2012 water quality report, the analysis, and the issue of plumes. That's all I turned, those follow-ups.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Michael, come on up. Thank you so much for your patience.
No problem, no worries.
Do you see, people don't have to leave, really. What did we do? We chased them all out.
I'm not used to this.
I know.
I'll give you a call.
All right, Michael.
Good evening. I have to go home. Take it outside?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to come before the community tonight. After careful consideration, my journey in the Sewer Commission has come to an end, and I've chosen to resign my post as Sewer Commissioner. The last 11 years have been remarkable for me in terms of growth, experience, and reward. The town of Hingham chose to elect and reelect me four times to a three-year term, which it's been an honor to serve. When I initially took out my papers to run, I was a 25-year-old man, working as a Director of Constituent and Public Affairs for a state senator. I had been dating a young lady for two years and had really no other responsibilities in life. Now, almost 12 years later, I'm married to that nice young lady I was dating. We have three beautiful children, ages three, and twins that are five, and I'm a regional vice president for a large regional bank. My time and availability to volunteer has decreased significantly, and in order for me to give my family the time it deserves and my work the attention it needs, I must resign. My time on the commission has taught me many things, but the greatest thing it has taught me is how to work together with people towards one common goal, making the town of Hingham a better place. I always tried to do the right thing by the community, and I walk away with my head held high at our accomplishments. I've had the honor and privilege to work with many amazing folks who share the same goal over the years, and know I will miss it tremendously. I am excited for what's in store for me and my family in the future, and thank from the bottom of my heart this fine community for allowing me to serve and make decisions on their behalf for well over a decade. Good night and good luck.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
We've seen the Sewer Department grow, and with the management agreement and the movement of the workforce over to the DPW, under the DPW, the, just in the couple of years, the work that has been done jointly with you as the lead really is remarkable. And it's been playing catch-up, and you've been very supportive of Randy Sylvester and all the workers that you've sent over there. And now they're cross-trained. So I think you've left a good legacy.
Thank you.
And we wish you good luck. And this, call this the announcement, have you turned your papers in?
So it will be effective July 31st, and I will be getting Eileen McCracken, our town clerk, my resignation letter this upcoming week.
Okay, so you'll be there for the meeting on the 29th?
I will, I have one remaining meeting.
Okay, and let, we won't, we don't really have a tremendous amount to discuss tonight, but let me bring my colleagues up to date on the consolidation agreement, not consolidate, the management agreement. Oh, my God, consolidation.
Can I just make one comment before we get to that?
Sure.
I just want to thank Michael for his service as well. The good news is, you know, I didn't realize you started out at age 25, 12 years ago, so you're still a very young man in my book, so that's good.
Now we know his age.
Yes, yes. The secret is out.
And the other thing I can guarantee you is that the children will find something for you to be active in through sports, so you know, the town will still have you volunteering in some capacity.
They certainly will.
It's hard to believe the twins are five.
Yeah, yeah, and ready to join teams and whatnot, so I'm sure I will be out on those fields.
And it's a funny thing, because 12 years ago, approximately when you were elected, I remember you contacting me and inviting me down to Hingham. Somehow I found my way down 3A and joined you to celebrate your victory, so it's been a long time, and...
And he stayed.
We're very proud of you. I did, but we're very proud of you, so good luck with everything.
Thanks, Paul.
Mike, when I was on the planning board, I never watched the Sewer Commission meetings. How are you doing?
True confessions.
I love you, man. I really got to give it to you. Thanks for your time to the town, because to me, it's volunteering and taking the guff and just trying to work solutions and figuring it out and just doing the best you can. The town needs people to do that, and you've done it for over decades, so my hat's off to you. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, since your resignation is not effective until the end of the month, on the management agreement, there are issues between the two sides, and I'm sorry you're not going to be here to help us with them. I have met with Eric once this week. I'm going to meet with him again and continue to meet with him until we hopefully come to some kind of mutual agreement.
Yes, so I guess I would speak to that. I can't really speak on behalf of the commission, because I think I find myself in the minority. But I would say that when we came up with this agreement, it was the second one in the nation. this agreement, it was the second one in the nation. It was outsourcing within the community, which was just an awesome concept, because we were able to retain jobs within the community and not lose any jobs, but really increase efficiencies. And I think we've accomplished that, and I'd like to see that continue moving forward. I will recommend to, to my commission to really take a vote against the, the current proposed version coming from the Sewer Commission. I believe that there's some, some misconception on how power should be shared, and I think that there's just some clarity that needs to happen. I do believe, working together with them, and the other two commissioners are very open-minded to working with the three of you, but I do believe providing some clarity to them around what needs to happen will, will allow it to move forward.
Excellent, and what I'd look to my colleagues for is consideration to continue working under the existing agreement for at least the next 90 days, which will take us through your departure, the naming of a new commissioner, because we'll give it from, when you turn in your resignation, we'll give it, we'll put it in the journal. Give it two weeks, and then the two boards will jointly interview. That should give us enough time. So if you could take back to your board on the 29th and get the same kind of agreement-
Absolutely.
-that will work through the next 90 days under the existing contract.
Absolutely.
That sounds like a great idea.
Can I, are you, are you two okay with that?
Yes.
Would one of you like to make a motion?
Sure. Unless Mr. Gano wants to have a pleasure.
Figure of shot, turn here.
Okay. I move that the board vote to continue the existing agreement with respect to the inter-agency operations of the Sewer Commission and the Highway Department Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Any further discussion? Anything from the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then if you would take back the request for legal counsel, we were presented bill from Eric for, which the Sewer Commission did not come to, or Eric did not come to the selectman to ask permission on behalf of the Sewer Commission.
We, we took a vote on that, and it is on record that they did need to petition the Board of Selectmen for that, so if an individual commissioner did go and seek counsel, I do believe that that is on that particular commissioner's dime.
And I, we've got to maintain process.
Yep.
And while I appreciate what might have happened, the permission, well, the request was not presented to the selectman.
Right.
So would you two like to weigh in?
I, I think that it'd be an incredibly dangerous precedent if we started picking up the legal bills for, you know, people sitting on various committees and asking the taxpayers to pay for them. I mean, lawyers aren't cheap.
Are you speaking personally?
Come on, Paul, now's your good chance.
No, he's too, he's too-
No, I mean, all kidding aside, there's a protocol to follow, and if you follow it and we, we consider it, the people expect us to spend their money wisely and judiciously and-
And we, we would certainly consider a request, but not after the fact.
Yep.
I don't think that-
No, no protocol, okay, is our legal bills.
What was that?
No retroactive, you know, you go to your lawyer, get the bill, oh, well, okay, that, I mean, this is a real problem now.
Yep. Yep, I, I would, I would, I would agree with you, and I think it would be a horrible precedent to set. I brought it up at the time of the meeting, I believe our meeting was on H-CAM when that vote was taken. It's, it's disheartening to know that a bill was presented subsequent to the fact that, that's just being brought to my attention now. So they were, the other commissioners were completely informed of the process, so I can't say that they were not aware, and it was an honest mistake, because they, they were certainly aware, and I think, I will bring that back to our board and let them know, and it's my hope that in the future, boards do not go rogue and do things like that.
Thank you, Michael. I don't know if we need a vote to not pay the bill, or if we wait for Ted to find out what the due process is here.
Let's see how it shakes out.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thank you, Michael, very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Good luck to you in the future.
Thank you, you all as well.
We have a-
See around the neighborhood, Mike.
We have a number of votes. If we can start down the vote list.
Okay, I'll move, we approve the application of the 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, DBA 99 Restaurant and Pubs, 428 Lincoln Street, for a change in beneficial interest and removal of LLC manager. ABCC has allowed this request to be filed as a master application.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Move that we vote to adopt the visitor code if conduct is amended.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just say, what's one thing on that is, is I, as I said at the meeting, I would hope that we would, as it's implemented, just monitor it and make sure that it, the due process and fairness to everybody is, is preserved, because it's obviously a new thing, so I hope we'll keep an eye on it.
And I hope we get it posted. That's my concern. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll vote to deter, to determine that the interest of Joseph Freeman in the application for modification of the mixed-use special permit for the Hingham Shipyard is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the town may expect from him, and to allow him to participate in the zoning Board of Appeals in consideration of this application.
Second.
Just in discussion here, we did this, I believe, last year for Joseph Freeman as well. He lives in the shipyard, and that's why this has to come to us. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I forgot to say aye. I'm an aye.
Well, I'll move to reappoint Peter Vanderwell and Nancy Kerber to the Affordable Housing Trust for two-year terms ending June 30, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Move we reappoint John Rice to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll move to reappoint Stephen Swett and Huck Handy to the Historical Commission for three-year terms ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move we reappoint Joseph Freeman to the ZBA for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I, I move to appoint Raymond Abreu as an Assistant Harbor Master for the ensuing year.
Second.
There is a sheet in our folders describing-
Read it.
Yep, and he's more than, very active, very good resume in there. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else? Okay, I recommend the board, whoa, sorry, any town administrative reports, selectman reports in a quiet week?
No, but I just want to comment about Chief Duff's remarks. I happen to know Albert Kimball as a young teenager, and that's where I met Mr. Hershey. He had the License Plate 71, and he was an extremely well-respected chief in the community, and goes back to a different era now, but the Call Firemen of that time, I thought it was a very strong band of community, and it's sad to see go into history, but I'm glad it's remembered in some way today.
Here's a plug for the Bear Cove Fire Museum. If people want to see how the fire departments operated, and they've got equipment from the 1914, 1910 era, when you see that, it's unbelievable how they did fight fires, and they've got all kinds of Hingham stuff. It's a great take to take your family there, just go spend an afternoon. It's over in Bear Cove Park, so take advantage of it.
That is standard fire equipment. It was restored, and it was originally brought back by Lloyd Linscott, Seabrook, or Seccong, it was in a junkyard. They found it down there and started restoring it at Charlie Cushing's gas station, Bellingham.
Bellingham, thank you.
Bellingham, that's where they, wow.
Makes it to the parade, too, right? They have some of the old equipment.
Yeah, beautifully restored machines.
And they've got a barn that I refer to as the boys' toy box. They've got a ton of old equipment that if they had the time and money and people, they'd be restoring it. So it's very old firefighting equipment, it's fascinating. Okay, I recommend the board enter executive session for the purposes of discussing strategy with regard to real estate negotiations with, one, Boston Golf, and two, 101 Hershey Street, since discussion of these matters in open session could be detrimental to the negotiating position of the town. The board will not resume open session this evening.
Second.
A little call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone. We'll see you on the 5th.